Ready to the December tenth meeting of the Escondido Planning Commission if you'll stand with me and say.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we have roll call?
Yeah, Commissioner Wyler.
Here.
Commissioner Cohen.
Here.
Commissioner Romo.
Here.
Commissioner Span.
Here.
Commissioner McNair.
Here.
Commissioner Garcia.
Here.
And then I am noting that Commissioner Mark Watson is no longer on our board.
He's present, but he's no longer on the board.
He's present to it, Captain. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes for last meeting?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of October twenty-second.
Okay.
If I could change my motion, move to approve the minutes identifying that Mark Watson was present and Commissioner, thank you.
A little second.
Yes, Chair. There is one piece of written communications that supplements the correspondence that's previously attached to item number three regarding the wireless communication facilities. So this particular piece of correspondence is from Crown Castle representing one of the carriers in the industry.
Thank you. Any future neighborhood meetings?
Yes, non-date specific, but the community advisory groups that have been formed to address certain topic areas are convening over the next several weeks. The first group met yesterday, December ninth, and that was the environmental and climate community advisory groups, but anyone that's interested in tracking and monitoring or even attending those meetings are encouraged to do so through the online portal that advertises those meeting dates. The city is also holding informational meetings regarding tobacco regulations. So if you recall, this commission did discuss this on my new study, which was a key component of that discussion. This is related to sales and use restrictions, and so it is to engage the community here on December seventeenth and nineteenth to have conversations with the community about what is important, existing regulations are out, and addressing or supplementing existence there. Some more information about that can be provided upon request.
Thank you. Okay, oral communications. Mr. Watson, would you like to address this?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, and Staff. As most of you are likely aware, after study and careful consideration, my wife and I have relocated outside of the prescribed geographic limits of our fair city, which effectively and unfortunately precludes my further services as a member of this public office. Please allow me to begin by stating that serving as a planning commissioner has been a distinct honor and privilege. I've been witness to wise debate, thoughtful consideration of weighty and complex matters, and have been genuinely humbled to serve this profession. I will say, though, that any success I enjoyed, any contributions to the process that I offered, were made on the shoulders of justice, some of whom I would like to recognize tonight. I was always thankful for the sometimes unsung efforts of Ms. Tasher and, I've never said your last name, Perino, and Ms. Perino, as they faithfully, flawlessly worked to ensure that I was given all of the administrative support that I needed to perform my duties, both their tireless efforts and their consistently positive and new attitude towards each event. I do wish that I thanked you both more often. Thank you, John Wayne. When questions arose regarding any potential conflicts of interest to counsel of our senior deputy city attorney, Mr. Phillips, was never further than a phone call away. It was his welcoming nature, his full availability, and wisdom that proved invaluable during my term of service. Thank you. As I've mentioned to my fellow commissioners, as well as members of the audience during previous meetings, I have been and remain routinely impressed, simultaneously educated, and the direct beneficiary of the collective knowledge, experience, and superlative presentation skills consistently toward our city staff. Under the steady leadership and demonstrated commitment to excellence of our Director of Community Development, Mr. Bill Martin, I was privileged to hear Assistant Director of Planning, Mr. Mike Strong, our Principal Planner, Mr. Adam Beinstone, our Senior Planner, Mr. Jay Paul, as well as Associate Planners, Ms. Ann Dolman and Mr. Darren Parker, deliver presentations that were always characterized by their organization, in-depth research, careful analysis, and engaging nature, all designed to assist me as a commissioner in my decision-making process. Thank you, Bill. Each planner has the amazing ability to transform incredibly complex matters into simple, easily-understood information, making untold hours of research and preparation look positively easy. I'm very grateful to you all. Behind the scenes, the entire planning and development staff were unfailingly available, willing, and able to respond to any question that I had regarding agenda issues, general questions, and procedural matters. Their commitment to my success as a planning commissioner for the City of Escondido was always appreciated by me. Our city's Assistant Director of Planning, Mr. Strong, one of the most calm, gentle nature, and utterly unflappable and knowledgeable men that I've had the privilege and benefit from interacting with, shared his wisdom and experience generously. To say that I'm grateful would be a terrific understatement, I know, and for teaching me that a full beard can and should be grown and worn as the daily occasion dictates, I thank you, Mike. If there were an award for most engaging presenter, it would surely go to our city's Senior Planner, Mr. Paul, whose passion, drive, and energy came shining through each time that he addressed the commission. His personal style is one that always captivated interest, so much so that I often found myself having to refrain from an involuntary hallelujah or amen at the conclusion of his words. I'm thoroughly convinced that Mr. Paul could read the entire White Pages and make it interesting. Thank you, Jay, for all you've done and continue to do. Escondido is your beneficiary. Commissioner Pastor Garcia, I've enjoyed being your seatmate during my period of service together. I appreciate your kind, caring nature and approach when considering commission business. Thank you, Joe. Commissioner and Magistrate McNair, the figurative E.F. Hutton of the planning commission, when you spoke, we all listened. Your insight benefited us all. I wish you good health and happiness. Thank you, Joe. Chairman Span, I benefited directly from your stalwart leadership, in no small measure and in no small measure your patience when I sometimes, oftentimes, ran overly long at the microphone. Thank you, Joe. Commissioner Romo, you brought and continue to bring an amazing wealth of knowledge and practical experience to each meeting. I grew a little smarter each time you shared your thoughts. Thank you, Mike. Commissioner Cohen, your unvarnished, matter-of-fact nature was always a pleasure to witness. You always said what you meant and meant what you said in a way that conveyed your thoughtful consideration of the matters before us. You've been a colleague and a friend, and for that, I thank you much. Commissioner Wyler, I have selfishly, shamelessly, and utterly benefited from your professional wisdom, your razor-sharpened grasp of planning matters, your preparation for each meeting, often evidenced by referring to page sixty-seven, paragraph three, sub-paragraph A two, your affable nature, and your uncompromising commitment to character, honesty, and service to your community. Thank you for the personal and professional growth that you helped achieve, Stan. And with these remarks, coupled with my sincerest thanks for a truly rewarding life experience that I say in this speaker last week, thank you.
Thank you, Mark. You will be missed, and I might suggest you have a future in speechwriting.
Thank you, Joe.
Does anybody else in the audience wish to speak about something that's not on tonight's agenda? Okay, seen none, we will move on to G one. Before we do that, does anybody on the dial have to disclose anything? No disclosures. G one, tentative subdivision map adoption of mitigated negative declaration.
Good evening, Chairman, and Commissioners. Darren Parker, Associate Planner here with the city. Item being presented tonight and proposed is for a tentative subdivision map for six residential lots in the RE twenty zone, and the adoption of a final mitigated negative The subject site consists of three parcels approximately three point three nine acres in size. The subject site is located just north of El Norit Parkway and east of La Honda Drive and on the north side of Villa Hondita. The subject site is relatively flat and undeveloped and surrounded by residential properties on all sides. The zoning of the subject property is known RE twenty, which is residential estates. Minimum lot size is twenty thousand square feet. The general plan designation is suburban, which allows up to three point three dwelling units per acre with a minimum lot size of twenty thousand square feet. The project entails subdividing three parcels into six residential lots. Lots ranging in size from approximately twenty thousand eighty-seven square feet to twenty-one thousand eight hundred eighty-seven square feet. The average lot width is a hundred feet, which is consistent with the RE zoning. A new private cul-de-sac street intersecting Villa Hondita on the north side would provide access to the project. The cul-de-sac would be constructed and designed to city standards and will provide sidewalk and parking on one side. Villa Hondita would also be improved to include a twenty-four feet of pavement and would be consistent with the city's standards or design standards. Project also entails sewer extensions. Water and service mains currently exist in La Honda Drive. An existing eight-inch main in La Honda Drive will be extended approximately twelve hundred square feet to the north along La Honda Drive to the intersection of Villa Hondita and then east along Villa Hondita to the project site, which is outlined in the diagram in red. Water service would be provided from an existing eight-inch main in La Honda Drive that will extend east along Villa Hondita Drive to the project site, which is outlined in blue. Project also proposes future sewer easements to the properties to the north between lots two and three, lots three and four. The design of the lots would also accommodate parking for six cars on each lot. Landscaping will be provided in accordance with the city's landscape ordinance. The project also, or, sorry, due to the grading and fuel management, the project acquired the removal of point six seven acres of sensitive habitat, which will have to be mitigated In conformance with SECA guidelines, a draft initial study and mitigated negative declaration was prepared for the proposed project and identified significant impacts to biological and tribal cultural resources. Draft initial study and mitigated negative declaration was circulated for a twenty-day public review period. No comments were received by staff within that period. Mitigation measures have been identified that would reduce all potential impacts to less than significant. Planning staff consulted with tribal groups as required by AV fifty-two. Only one tribal group requested consultation. Concerns expressed by the tribe have been adequately addressed through the implementation of mitigation measures in C one through CR. Staff has recommended approval of the six-locked subdivision map, final mitigated negative declaration, and mitigation monitoring report. That concludes staff's presentation. If you have any comments in here.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions, Staff?
Just a couple of minor questions. So the main access coming off of, like, the street of La Honda, yeah, La Honda Drive, which is Villa Hondita, that's only twenty-four feet in width, but the cul-de-sac going up to provide access to all the homes is twenty-eight feet in width. Why the difference?
Yeah, Villa Hondita is a private access easement, and it's actually across other properties. So the minimum for fire, you know, to get to the neighborhood is twenty-four feet, but at twenty-four feet, there would be no parking on either side of it, but it's kind of an off-site improvement to the project, and then the project itself is constructing the improvements to a rural residential standard.
Okay, and I do notice that there's, is there fifty-six feet of right of way for Villa Hondita going all the way to the very eastern end? Is that in anticipation that there's going to be access provided to those properties to the east?
At, you know, when that fifty-six-foot easement was created, I think it was in the, I want to say the sixties or seventies, the property to the east, you know, wasn't developed, and I think that, you know, that was the potential, but what you have now is right on this easterly property line is track nine twenty, which is Henry Avacotta, Henry Ranch Development is under grading right now.
Okay, and so there's no access.
Right, that project is not oriented or relies on any access from the end of this.
I mean, the only reason I'm asking is I kind of assume all of that part of it, why has not the applicant requested to get that made available? Is that just off-site, it's not part of their property?
So, yeah, I mean, those are easements, either that easement, that fifty-six is on adjacent fee ownerships, except for the piece that would be across, what is it, lot six of their property, but the rest of it, but even the part that's across lot six, it's an easement in favor of other parties that, you know, they just can't quickly.
Okay, I mean, it was just something that I noticed, that it just seemed like a waste to have all of that sitting there under an access. That's all. But that was all the questions.
Real quick, have the bio cultivation basins featured on each lot that can be maintained by the individual homes, what happens if the homes don't maintain bio cultivation?
What we record against the whole subdivision is a stormwater control facilities maintenance agreement that runs with the land, and so, you know, the homeowners are made aware that they are responsible for that. Being a private subdivision, they're going to have a small HOA that would also be tasked with oversight of that.
Thank you.
And through the chair, if I may, just to embellish on the response, the project CCNR is that the homeowners association is going to have the responsibility, of course, will have very clear definitive direction on the maintenance obligations and how to resolve issues that might come up. So that's something that staff will have an opportunity to work on with the CCNRs.
Any other questions? Thank you so much, great presentation. Now, we go to the public hearing. Does anybody in the audience wish to speak about this? Did you want to talk?
Yeah.
Can you come up to the podium and state your name and address for the record and then fill out the all slip before you leave?
We've had this laying in my home, I've got to find a bigger floor. We've had it for about a hundred and twenty years, and I've cut corners up there, rattlesnakes, rabbits, coyotes, pickers, and loons, and I know that there has always been a water problem. Now, I'm speaking for six neighbors, low, that are in the stream, praying, and I just, I want to be assured that my house doesn't get flooded again like it did in nineteen It has, that, the scorey, the cusp of the wind on the hill has always done a swell, but pursuing that safety, they had to have these lines, it would be a disaster, and the spell would be terrible. You reassure me that all the water will go down and under to the main drain coming down the city. And the other thing is that the east, there is a road, there is a dusty old road, it used to be my motorcycle, but we've had this a long time, and I just want to be sure that I don't lose any land, but make it more convenient to build around the building and I lose more land. And also, I notice on the west side of the east, there's a telephone hole right in the middle of the hill, it's right, right there, and I know what the state was at, but the neighbors, I guess, didn't like it, and they pulled it out, but I've got the nursery, and I, well, look out the back of my house, that hole sits, and see flowers and trees, and I'm not interested in any type of division. My lawyer, Roy, here, so he better be there, and a lot of members there, but I just want to be sure the east, where the east is at, and not swinging into me, and that's very good for me, so I won't have to abandon my house for two months with the water that is coming down there. I can't think of anything else, other than, I probably should have gone myself, so if you wouldn't have this meeting here, probably come out for a pretty good buy, so it is.
Thank you.
Do I sign anything?
Fill out one of the speaker forms.
Oh. Excuse me, sir.
We have one question for you.
Okay, yeah.
Could you clarify where your property is, that it's on the north side or the south side?
On the south side. It's the nursery, you remember, I have just the first house with all the palm trees and olive trees, and a lot of privacy, and it's wide open down by my back window, which I don't want to keep it that way, and I've ruined my, the nursery, so, that's it.
Thank you. Thank you. Does anybody else want to talk about this? Okay, seen none, we close the public hearing.
Thank you.
And open for discussion.
I guess, Owen, I think that he's concerned about drainage. My experience is that no matter what, it's always better after the development than it is before. Obviously, all the stormwater has to be controlled by the basin, so I don't really see a problem, even a potential problem here. Can you reassure us?
There was one problem about fifteen years ago.
Okay, the public hearing is closed, sir. Sorry.
Ron Anderson cut the drain out, and then he ordered up again. It's a long story. Should have mentioned that to you.
Yeah, the stormwater, you know, will capture and meter out the runoff from the property, and also, like I was mentioning earlier, the Henry Ranch Development to the east, along that whole, what would be their western property line, they're installing a kind of an oversized broutage all the way down, which is going to convey that water out of there and into a storm drainage system. So that's actually going to do more probably for this property and the gentleman's five acres below.
Thank you.
I hope you're right.
I actually have a comment, and it might be even more of a question. Commissioner Cohen brought up something very interesting, which is the onsite detention basins, stormwater. Is there just not enough room on the southern portion of the side, adjacent to the Hondita or something, for a more common stormwater facility as opposed to all these individuals? Because I share the same concern that Commissioner Cohen has, that, you know, people get to do what they do on their individual lives, and all of a sudden, inadvertently, maybe they end up destroying the integrity of that stormwater system. It seemed like it'd be better if it was somewhere, a more common area where it all applies. One spot can be maintained in one spot. Is that just not a possibility because, you know, the constriction, the restrictions on the property itself?
Yeah, I mean, there is, there are common, there's a, you know, a common basin there below lot six that treats the road itself, the new road going into the project, but the individual lots, I think some of them, there's a few of them that sit potentially, I think, slightly below the roadway, and the amount of treatment needed just for an individual lot is typically not a big item. It's potentially a single tree well or a small basin. Those will be identified, you know, in final engineering on the grading plans, the precise grading plans, and like you were saying, they will end up in the CCNRs, and they will end up in that stormwater control maintenance agreement and be memorialized that way.
Is there any other discussion? Entertaining motion?
Motion. Move to approve S U B seventeen dash zero zero three zero and E N V seventeen dash zero 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 six.
Commissioner Wyler, yours is not one of ours. We have a yes motion. We've motioned, it'll be a yes vote.
We have six yes votes. It passes that tentative subdivision map adoption mitigated negative declaration, S U B seventeen dash zero zero three zero and E N V seventeen dash zero 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 six. Okay, does anybody have anything to disclose about the site? G two, specific plan amendment and conditional use permit.
Good evening, Commissioners. This is item G two, K H G nineteen dash zero zero three one and nineteen dash one and nineteen dash zero zero three two. And it's a specific plan amendment and conditional use permit for the redevelopment of a discount tire shop at two oh nine South Escondido Boulevard in three three Yon West Second Avenue. The general plan designation for the site is S P A nine, that's where the downtown's specific from, and accordingly, the zoning is S P, which is specific plan. And we have a map of the downtown specific planning area, there are seven districts total. The project site is that little rectangle in red, and currently, it's in the historic downtown district. And an aerial view of the site, there are two buildings, one's occupied by a bridal shop, and the other is occupied by the discount tire shop. So on the site right now, there's actually four lots comprising the project site for a total of about point eight acre. The discount tire shop is approximately seven thousand square feet. The bridal by six empty shop is approximately ninety nine hundred square feet. There's two entrances to the site on Second Avenue, one for the bridal store and one for the tire shop. And similarly, there's two off of the alley running along the south side of the project site. The discount tire shop is currently a legal non-conforming use. The historic downtown district does not allow either vehicle repair or maintenance services, or sales of outfits when there are installation services offered. And there are value limits on non-conforming uses, on expansions and modifications. So basically, a complete rebuild of the use is not possible. There's two components to this project, the first one is the specific plan amendment. That component would reassign the project site from the historic downtown district to the southern gateway district, which does allow light vehicle repairs and conditional use. And we do consider tire shops and installation as a type of light vehicle repair. And you can see a map of how the district would change under this specific amendment. The second component is the conditional use permit, which would demolish both the bridal shop and the existing tire shop, and replace them both with a new tire shop. Seven thousand seven hundred and twenty-one square feet on the ground floor, and a floor plan coming up, two thousand seven hundred and fifty square feet for mezzanine, for a total of ten thousand four hundred and seventy-one square feet of the building. There'd be twenty-nine parking spaces provided, only twenty-six are required, so they are providing three additional spaces. A new trash enclosure that complies with the city's trash enclosure design guidelines. And they're going to be replacing a non-conforming monument sign at the northeast corner of the site with a new monument sign. There are several street and alley modifications included with this project. Second Avenue would be widened by six feet along the project frontage, that would include a transit, that would also include a transition zone along the primary deal left, which is the trickle tub laundry. There are traffic signals at Second and Escondido, would need to be relocated because of the spike hitting, so it would be moved to the project site within a new easement area for maintenance activities. Both of the existing driveways on Second Avenue would be closed, and they would be replaced with one new driveway. You'll see on the site print in a minute that one of those two existing driveways is very close to the intersection, so the new driveway would be a little bit further away than that existing driveway, which is good for traffic safety. There also, we have two foot wide dedication along the north side of the alley, which will widen the alley from twenty feet to twenty-two feet. And there's actually two alley driveway entrances, one for the rental shop and one for the tire shop. They would both be closed, and there would be one new driveway at the southwest corner of the site. And here we have the site plan, you might be able to see that there's two existing driveways on Second Avenue, both will be replaced with that three foot wide driveway that's in between the two existing driveways. You can see where the new alley entrance is going to be at the southwest corner of the site. The tire shop will be oriented in an east to west direction, right now, it's going north to south. The service base will be on the south side of the building, facing away from, you know, the two busy streets and toward the alley. And we've got twenty-nine parking spaces, three bio retention areas, one in both the northeast and the southeast corner, and one in the landscape island inside the parking This is the floor plan for the ground floor, you have the sales and retail display area, as well as the vehicle service area for up to six vehicles, offices, restrooms, storage room, mechanical rooms. Second floor is primarily the walking grate with tire storage racks that extend pretty much from the ground floor all the way up to the ceiling of the back grate, as well as some additional storage rooms. And I have some color determination plans, they will be incorporating a neutral color palette, primary yellow material, I think it's pronounced E I F S, it's like a insulated waterproof plating system, there are birkenear accents as well. That is the west and east side. And the north and south side, you can see that there are trellis, trellises on the north side and the west side, for vine plantings. There's a faux storefront window on the north side, and fabric awnings over the windows and the entrance. And we have a landscape plan, our existing street trees along the Escondido Boulevard frontage, which will be remaining. New trees will be planted along Second Avenue and along the alley. And as I said before, there's bio retention basins in the northeast and southeast corner, and in that landscaped island in the middle. For CEQA, there are two exemptions that apply to this project for the specific plan amendment. We have the common sense exemption, which is applicable to projects when it can be seen with certainty that there's no environmental impacts involved. For the conditional use permit, it's a replacement and reconstruction exemption. And our recommendation is that we recommend that city council approve P H G nineteen dash zero zero three one and zero zero three two. And I do want to mention that a condition of approval got left out of this staff report. We're recommending that you vote to recommend this condition, it's prior to issuance of any building permits, a lot to be mentioned recorded for the four lots included within the project site. If I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Does anybody have a question?
Is there any reason why, other than it's off-site, but why there's not a recommendation from staff to include that entire block, that front Second Avenue? Just change that whole block there to the gateway area? Because on the corner, there's, it's not an historic building. Other than, it's just not, why this particular property?
Yeah, one point that was contemplated, but I think there were some concerns about the underlying property owner's interest to be a part of the application. It does change the nature of the uses that are permitted or prohibited on each site by transferring from one zone to the other. So this does not, or the action that's being suggested for the recommendation to do a mid-block zone change, doesn't change the nature of other property, other rights.
Okay. And then, how long ago was discount tire, I mean, it's been there as far as long as I can remember, I'm sure there was something for that. And I guess this kind of goes to the historic nature of why this particular block was included in the historic district as a part, as opposed to the southern gateway district. I mean, we're going back in history, and I don't know, maybe Chairman Span might know why this particular block wasn't in the gateway to begin with, because, because discount was probably there at that time.
You're right. I think that the boundary on that side is a little bit arbitrary. The historic district residential doesn't start till the fifth. And we have the downtown historic core, which you can see is outlined in that little black line inside the historic district. My primary concern, and I think the Historic Preservation Commission's primary concern, is inside the historic core, but it does stretch down all the way to Center City and out past the hospital. I don't know why the other side, other than the fact that it faces the historic core, was included in that, I think it is pretty much arbitrary boundary. I do like the fact that we can control the uses by just zoning that one, and not the rest of it, I can see that once it starts to go like that, we end up with more and more auto repair shops. I know that it is light duty auto repair, but I think it's a real important part of downtown, is this tire shop, it's always packed, if you ever go by there, and the way that they get more parking spaces is they make them smaller, because I can't park my truck.
Through the chair, if I also may respond. So Second Avenue is a circulation element, prime segment of the city in terms of traversing east-west in the community. And I think the impetus behind the designation on a lot of the properties front of Second Avenue was to have similar use, land use authorizations and permissive land uses that you see in the higher intensity areas along Valley Parkway and Grand. The southern gateway district does serve in a lot of ways as a transitional space out of the urban core setting in a way as we approach the Los Angeles community neighborhood and other residential districts beyond. So I think the idea at the time was to emphasize the same retail serving uses on Second Avenue as you would customarily see on Grand Avenue. With respect to the proposed redesignation of the site, the original application request was to change the list of permitted uses throughout the whole historic district. Staff had some concerns about authorizing or legitimizing repair shops or other limited repair facilities throughout the whole historic district, since there is a lot emphasis on pedestrian oriented uses, especially on Grand Avenue. So this solution allows the application to proceed with improvements on the property and not compromise the visionary goal setting of the historic district in general. Thank you.
One more question, in the conditions of approval, there's a couple of conditions, general condition one and nine, that essentially says the CUP is going to be null, you know, within twelve months. My concern is that we've got roadway, you know, improvement plans and everything that need to be done, we've got demolition permits that need to be obtained, you know, what is it, I guess my concern is that it's not enough time if the applicant runs into problems with, you know, the process to get the plans approved. So, like I said, it's just a concern. And I'm wondering if twelve months is easily enough to bump to eighteen, or is there a real reason just to have that for twelve months?
That's our, it's our, I'm sorry, it's our standard condition, but I believe there is an option to extend it if you need it, is that correct?
Yeah, this commission has approved conditional use permits that have had a twenty-four month expiration term to obtain building permits and actively work on them, so that's something that the commission wants to apply to this project, is your discretion.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, staff?
Let me go to the site plan, please. Okay, do you have the colored one, the landscape one, it's easier for me to see. So my understanding is before, we had the two driveways, one going into Suzan T's and one going into discount tire. And then, right now, we basically have one. Discount Tire was really giving the majority of the traffic into that alley, most of that traffic, I believe, the alley, is that alley one-way or?
I believe it's two ways, isn't it? Yeah.
So my concern is, before, they pulled out of that driveway, went up to the street and got out of town. Now we've actually extended it down behind the other buildings down to the south of them that are utilizing that alley as well. We've increased that traffic there, but I don't believe we have any conditions for them to do anything about improving that roadway, and it is pretty beat up at this point in time. The increased traffic from that bay coming around is going to increase that wear and tear in that, and has anybody looked at considering what may occur with that based on this alley down here? It's an in-and-out driveway right there, is that correct?
Yeah.
And so I just, I have a concern right there that that's just going to take a beating. I do know that you gave an extra two foot of dedication, you gave two feet of dedication there. Can we make a condition that that alley gets improved as well, with their, or resurfaced or something of that nature?
Yeah, in fact, that would be a pretty standard condition of approval for a project like this. And I was looking quickly.
Didn't notice it.
Yeah, I'm not finding it either.
Currently, the deliveries come into the alley, like, when truck comes in and unloads into the, turn to the side of the building, which blocks that entire alley as it stands right now. Where are the deliveries going to happen now, and what are they going to block? I don't, I mean, obviously, it can't happen in the alley, it's just good. Is it going to block the parking lot, or are they going to block the entrance on the other side? Second, where's all that going to take place? They obviously get a lot of deliveries.
That would be a good question to direct to the applicant. I suspect it would be along the bay service side, probably at non-business hours, applicants here, you or she may be able to respond to that.
Okay, do we have any more questions, staff?
This, after driving by, looking at everything, this looks like a nice improvement to the area we're looking at. But in regard to the goutting, I absolutely agree, something should be done about that, because I drove through it today, and it is pretty beat up, it's been increased traffic permitting there, so if, particularly if it's something that's very standard, you know, something like this, we should include that.
Yeah, just looking through this, it's not where I would normally expect to see our condition, but in actually, in, I think it's under street improvements, condition number one, the street, the, it talks about the streets that shall be improved, so you have Second Avenue's going to be widened to collect, but then it also talks about the pub, it just lists the public alley. So the alley would be typically improved, you know, up to standard in those, in those ways, which would be paving and even a concrete center gutter.
And my other question is, has the Historic Preservation Commission made any comments about?
We did not see this, no. And there's no historic designation on the buildings, it really wouldn't.
Um, all right, thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions, staff? Okay. I will open the public hearing, does anybody in the audience wish to speak about this? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and ask for discussion up here.
So based on the comments from, you know, fellow commissioners about improvements to the alley, are we satisfied that the conditions in here will require the applicant to repay, resurface, or do something for that alley?
I have a question also, before we even get that far. The condition of the alley right now is bad.
Right.
So now, we're expecting discount tire to bring that up to current standards. Where, what is their obligation as far as, does the city come up with a part of that, or is it all on them?
No, it'd be considered a frontage improvement, so basically, re, you know, So basically, you know, repaving, if it's determined there's no structural section and that's part, you know, why it's a part of that, it would be looked at. But typically, the alleys, drainage is the issue. So it's, if you can put that concrete center swale, you can do a lot for the paving. Whatever paving you do will last a lot longer.
Okay. So are you satisfied that what's in the conditions right now is satisfactory to approve the alley?
That's how we would interpret. That's how, that is our intent and that's how we would interpret in final engineering, that condition. But if you want to add initial language, that helps us too.
Would the language be like, the alley would be improved to satisfy engineering?
Yeah, I would, if you want specifically to say alley repaved with, you know, drainage swale to meet current alley standards.
And you might want to add the extra twelve months just in case you run into problems now that their scope has increased a little bit.
Technically, the scope hasn't increased at all. All we're doing is clarifying the condition.
Correct, yes.
The scope has always remained that. We're not asking anything after the problem.
So my fellow commissioners satisfied with the explanation from staff that this is a normal, that's going to be the interpretation? What I don't want to have happen is the applicant be confused and argue the point down the road that, no, no, it's not a condition in here.
But we, you can in the motion condition it with the center swale and repaving.
All I'm clarifying is we're not asking to do something.
Right.
Okay.
And that is relative, what they understand it to be and what we understand it to be. So it might on their part look like a condition because they didn't understand it, but we are going to condition it now to the benefit of the city. And?
Yeah. Yeah, if you were to look at our alley standard and our design standards, the figure for it, it would show, you know, paved alley with a concrete center swale.
That will be the best alley in town, I guarantee you, because with the rain, the alley on the other side of Grand is a lake from one end to the other.
I understand what we're trying to accomplish, I truly do. My concern is one clarification, of course. The other thing is, you know, there's some significant improvements that are occurring on the other side. You know, pulling up six feet aside, curb gutter sidewalk, moving a traffic signal, and that's significant. You know, I just want to make sure that we're doing this appropriately and as a normal course of business when we're looking at improvements to that alley. Because they are needed, there's no doubt. So I don't want us to be overstepping our bounds for less than.
Well, that's why I brought up the fact that the alley's in bad shape now, and now we're conditioning them to bring it up to city standards. But it needs to be, this is the time to do it when everything else is torn up.
Sure. The other concern I have is, you know, also what Commissioner Home brought up, which is the loading and unloading. You know, right now, it's in the alley and, you know, it looks to me like if they continue blocking the alley, it also blocks. The only way to load from the alley is going to be right in front of that secondary driveway that provides access to the alley. It's a concern. I guess if that's how things are operating right now and it hasn't caused problems, I don't know, staff or, you know, that have been occurring or complaints in that alleyway?
None to report?
I drive through there all the time and go around the truck without any problem.
Because that's what we do.
Since this is an application that is discretionary, if there are specific conditions about the operational characteristics, this would be a good time to flag those. It's very similar to the recent request of the church facility that was expanding into the office area and there was concern about where deliveries would be in relation to the main campus of that site. So if the commission wants to ask the applicant what the intention is?
Is the applicant here?
I don't know. I'm seeing a yes.
Would you come up to the podium, please? We have some specific questions, and if I could get you to fill out a speaker slip when you're done.
Sure.
Thank you. I think the question's been raised about loading and unloading the truck. We're all familiar with how it's done right now. Is that going to change? How do you plan on?
Yes, it will change, actually. The truck will come in, will enter from west Second Avenue, take a right in, swing around, and head towards the western side of the building where the truck will unload. And from there, they'll pull out and make a left turn and exit off to South Orange. That's the route.
So it'll come out into the alley and go over to Orange. Okay, I was looking at that, and that's a pretty big truck and that's a pretty tight corner. Have you determined that it's going to be able to do that?
Uh, yeah, we've run through, through Auto-Turner, which is a CAD software. We ran the simulation and found that it makes the movements.
While you're up there, I have a question for you, too. This is no surprise as far as approving the alley to city standards, is it?
Well, that was kind of unexpected. I could see, I could see the alley frontage, but as far as the whole alley, I guess one of the questions I have is would that be in the future, like capital improvements that were set forth? I mean, if our project didn't go in, would that alley just stay the same for the next twenty years or?
Yeah, we have not done a whole lot of alley programs of late, but the condition would be the front, you know, the project's frontage. So you wouldn't be typically required to go all the way down to Orange. You would basically be, now, it might be, you know, an additional few feet to make the drainage transition or whatever, but the intent would not to be, would not to continue those improvements all the way to Orange unless we specifically, you know, had negotiated that in advance probably.
So would that be half the alley? Or does it go, you know, half the alley including the center drainage? I'm wondering if the condition, as it stands in your understanding of what we're asking the applicant to do, would it be normal for the applicant, frontage along an alley, to improve the entire alley or half the alley? I guess that's what I'm getting at.
Yeah, the norm would be the whole alley. Frontage improvements per our standards extend out up to thirty-two feet. So it's typically half-street plus twelve, ten or twelve, with a maximum of thirty-two. So alleys, you know, when you front an alley, you do the whole alley.
Okay. All right. So it's just the normal park doing business?
That's correct.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else have a question to the applicant?
Thank you.
Thank you.
If there's no more discussion, I'd like to make a motion, please. I'd like to move that we approve PHG nineteen zero zero three with the added condition alleyway improvement to full width. I don't think we need to add anything more of that. And changing conditions one and nine to twenty-four months.
There's also the tie-in agreement on the fourth.
Oh, I'm sorry. And add the condition as requested by staff for the tie-in, lot tie-in agreement. So there's three items. I'll second. Okay, moved to the second.
Commissioner Meyer, I apologize, your question is not one word.
Six yes votes. So PHG nineteen zero zero three one and zero zero three two, it's passed. We're moving on to G three, personal wireless service facilities regulations.
Evening, chairs, members of the planning commission. My name is Adam Feinstone, principal planner here, City of Escondido. I've got with me Roger Scholder here, Jake Ball, our senior planner. So the item before us is a proposed amendment to Article thirty-four of the Escondido Zoning Code. That's our communications antennas ordinance and in addition, adoption of new guidelines for the deployment of small wireless facilities in the public right-of-way. So I guess the first question, what are small wireless facilities? Basically, they are small antennas and associated infrastructure, or equipment placed on infrastructure such as light poles and utility poles in the public right-of-way, and typically used for both capacity and coverage as part of a wireless service provider's network. They're also sometimes called small cells, micro cells, nodes, small antennas. I think the most popular that you probably hear out there are small cells. So that term kind of is used interchangeably, however, small wireless facilities is the true definition as of law. So based on FCC Communications Commission definition, small cells are limited to a maximum of fifty feet in height or, I believe it's ten percent greater than the nearest adjacent structure, whichever is less. They're also limited to three cubic feet in size, and then the accessory equipment that goes along with it is limited to a maximum of twenty-eight cubic feet. The City of Escondido's proposed development standards that are in the guidelines, those are definitely smaller and lower than the numbers listed here. Do you have a better idea of what these things actually are? Here's a couple of examples. I believe all of them have either been built or are in review by the city. The one on the, let's see, this one here is one of the older ones. It is actually right across from City Hall here, near Starbucks and Fat Burger across the street. So these are some of the, some of the facilities that have been constructed recently. What small wireless facilities are definitely not is these macro sites, the old school cell towers or camouflaged, so to say, cell towers. These are a couple of examples that I just found online, and neither of them are great as far as concealment. One of them obviously not concealed at all, the other one attempting to be concealed as a palm tree, but not doing a great job at that. Those are not what we're looking at here, although there are a few stipulations in the zoning ordinance that would apply to certain, certain facilities in general. Most of what we're looking at here is specific to small wireless facilities. So a little background, back in two thousand seventeen, City Council adopted ordinance number two thousand seventeen dash ten RR as a first effort to address wireless facilities, small wireless facilities in the right-of-way. That allowed for adoption of guidelines, although those guidelines were not adopted at that time, and the intent was to come back and revisit and see how the ordinance has worked in a couple of years. So that's kind of where we are, we are and what we're doing now. During the past few years, since the two thousand seventeen ordinance, staff has gained some experience and familiarity and processed, or is in the process of reviewing, about eighty to eighty-five total applications for small wireless facilities. I believe twenty-two have been constructed, another thirty, give or take, are, have been approved and are either under construction or pending, start pending construction. And then there's about another thirty, give or take, that are currently under review by staff. So the current applications that we've been seeing up until now are for the four G service, fourth generation. We anticipate that five G service will be coming in soon, probably within a year or so. However, we've not seen any of those applications at this point. Types of facilities that we've seen proposed are typically either top mount on a streetlight or flush mount against a streetlight. We've also seen some strand-mounted facilities, which are little boxes that are on a wire between two SDGNE or utility poles. So they just look like another little piece of equipment, and I'll show you a picture in a minute or two of a little piece of equipment that's on the lines up there. And then also, we've had a couple that are offset from utility poles. So in addition to the insight gained from processing applications by the city over the last few years, we also need to update our guidelines and ordinance in order to maintain consistent, or to be consistent and compatible with the current FCC regulations. Back in two thousand eighteen, September twenty eighteen, the FCC adopted a declaratory ruling and order that addressed certain aspects of small wireless facilities, particularly regarding permitting considerations, timeframe for review, also known as the shot clock, if you ever heard that term being thrown around in this review, and the aesthetic considerations. By doing this update and creating the guidelines, we are attempting to create city policy that will adequately regulate this. So the city started off this effort at the end of last year and brought a zoning code amendment initially to commission here, if you'll remember back in February. At that point, we had made proposed amendments or proposed modifications to the actual code language, although guidelines were not provided at that time. The recommendation the planning commission had made on the ordinance to provide a positive recommendation to City Council was not forwarded on at that time as a result of additional work that staff has put into this and determined additional modifications are necessary. So right now, we are bringing those modifications forward, and we have also crafted some guidelines that are being presented here for consideration and recommendation as well. So the zoning code amendment language and draft guidelines were crafted with the following goals in mind, protecting public health, safety and welfare, accommodating and supporting the deployment of wireless networks throughout the city, protecting our visual character here in the city, a goal of also creating a clear and predictable permitting process for both the carriers and staff here, clarification of some of the definitions, and additionally to provide quantitative design and development standards that are truly measurable. So the proposed zoning code amendment language reflects, excuse me, affects various sections of the Article thirty-four communication antennas, though focused primarily on small wireless facilities in the right-of-way. The proposed modifications include additions and deletions and revisions of certain definitions, removal of most of the development standards and criteria from the ordinance, those have instead been placed in the guidelines, which we'll go into in a little bit. The amendment also specifies its applicability, so when I was saying that there's certain areas that it discusses that are not specific to small wireless facilities, those are basically creating inserting language to the effect of, except for small wireless facilities in the public right-of-way, da-da-da. So that's kind of the, that's to an extent, most of the revisions that are not specific to wireless, small wireless facilities. It also describes permitting requirements, including the creation of an administrative permit, and it creates revised findings for approval of these small wireless facilities. The guidelines for the deployment of all small wireless facilities in the public right-of-way have been created as a companion to the, companion document to Article thirty-four of the Escondido Zoning Code, and they contain a majority of the regulations relevant to them. They're intended to be adopted concurrently with the zoning code amendment. It may be one of the modified by resolution of City Council as needed from time to time. Guidelines are divided into five sections. They include the introduction, which kind of goes over the purpose and intent and use of the document. Applicability identifies which facilities are subject to the guidelines. Application processing and the design and development standards, I'll have some more detail in on the upcoming slides, so leave those for a second. And then they also create a standard list of conditions of approval that would be applicable to all facilities. Just because those standard conditions are there does not mean that the city could not place additional conditions of approval on any individual's facility. Application processing, what we are looking at here provides a clear set of regulations describing how applications will be reviewed and processed by the city. It identifies required permits and agreements, which include the small wireless facility permit, it can be one of the two types. It's either an administrative permit for facilities that meet most, or all of the requirements in the guidelines and the design and development standards. Or it might be a conditional use permit for certain types of facilities placed on certain types of structures, or in the event that most facilities exceed the quantitative limitations and standards that are contained in the guidelines themselves. There's also a requirement for an approach permit for any facilities where work is being done in the public right-of-way. And any facilities that are being placed on city-owned infrastructure or structures such as streetlight poles would require that a carrier director is into a master license agreement with the city. That's being handled through our real property division in the engineering department. Applications would be accepted in certain ways and certain times and manners as identified in the guidelines. And the other part of these, this section talks about what process and procedures would be dealt with and would be, would kind of dictate and go over. But how we process and review the applications, excuse me. As far as the design and development standards, the section is really the heart of the document. It addresses the placement of facilities and support structures that they can go on, size, height, and other physical characteristics of both the antennas and the accessory equipment. The requirements for screening of equipment, so you don't have, don't have wires and cords and brackets and everything exposed. Also goes over public safety considerations, things that would, for instance, preclude facilities from blocking lines of sight out of driveways or visibility of traffic signals, things of that sort. And there's other prohibitions where certain types of facilities couldn't be placed on, for instance, archways over streets and public art pieces, things of that sort. And there's also other miscellaneous regulations and limitations that are included with those guidelines. In order to provide info, information to the community on the proposed zoning code amendment and guidelines, staff held a public information session on November 25th. Staff also created a public website, project website, where information regarding proposed amendments and guidelines could be obtained. Both documents, both those guidelines and amendments were, zoning code amendment, have been on the website since the beginning of the month. Primary issue raised by the public at that meeting was the, related to the potential health impacts of radio frequency emissions put off by wireless facilities. However, decisions on, basically, the city is really precluded from considering health-related impacts and radio frequency emissions with regard to approval or denial of wireless facilities. Specifically, the federal codes state that a city cannot regulate the placement, construction, and modification of personal wireless service facilities on the basis of environmental effects of radio frequency emissions, to the extent that such facilities comply with the commission's regulations concerning such emissions. So basically, we can review reports that show what the, what those radio frequency emissions are and that they are within federal limitations. We cannot ask or require that the emissions be held to any different standard. Other federal regulations basically lay out that the city has to allow deployment of facilities that are necessary to meet a service provider's objectives. So we can't create regulations that prohibit or at the effective prohibiting deployment of facilities. We can kind of direct or create regulations that get to time, place, and manner of their deployment, but we can't by any means say, you can't put a facility out to provide the service that you want to provide, whether that be capacity or coverage. Staff also conducted some consultation with the wireless services, wireless facilities, wireless services industry. We reached out and sent draft, a couple drafts of the documents to them, both the facility guidelines as well as the ordinance. We sent them copies of those documents a few times. We also met with them specifically face-to-face in a meeting in August of this year and worked through some of the issues that have been raised. The industry representatives still had some concerns, as outlined in the staff report, regarding certain quantitative standards contained in the guidelines and certain prohibitions on support structures where facilities cannot be placed. Project was reviewed and is determined to be exempt from CEQA, same common sense exemption that Mr. O'Malley had cited on the previous project here. And based on forewarning, everything above, the staff recommends that the planning commission approve resolution 2019-13, which would be recommendation to the council for approval of the zoning code amendment in small wireless facilities. That concludes my presentation. Be happy to answer any questions. And I do have, if you so desire, I do have some exhibits that can be put up as far as what certain facilities do look like and other exhibits of that sort.
Thank you. Does anybody have questions, staff?
Just a quick question. You said you see the 4G, but you haven't seen the 5G yet. If these, if people come to put in these communication antennas in their, for the 4G, will they accept 5G at some point? Or will that have to go through reconstruction process in order to have it swapped out to accept 5G?
So the way that 5G works, and maybe I'll actually, I'll let Mr. Paul speak to this. He's got more knowledge and experience background on this.
We have not seen any 5G to date. We know it is coming. Recent article in newspaper in the Union Journal indicated that it will be rolling out soon in San Diego, which is more dense. For that, it's being rolled out in larger cities on test bases around the United States and around the world. 5G is the next round in technology. Might have a slide that explains it. And, but we don't anticipate it rolling out here for a year or so, as it slowly makes its way to the city. 5G works a little bit differently than 4G. 4G works at a lower frequency. Therefore, it can travel longer distances. It cannot carry as much bandwidth or data as 5G and is very fast. 4G is very fast, but not at the speeds and bandwidth that 5G covers. Now, 5G, some people indicated that's a minor site. That's not observed, I'm not sure with how all the technology will work, but it has a very high frequency. It can carry, it works at higher bandwidth. It can carry a lot more data because there's not a lot of users up in that bandwidth. The lower bandwidths right now are used by TV, radio, the telecommunications industry, and a lot of the bandwidth is taken up by the military. So there's not a lot of bandwidth to handle all of the capacity from all those internet and broadband-type uses. When they get up in the higher frequencies, the millimeter frequencies, there is a lot of bandwidth in that, but the signals can't travel very far. So there are going to be interrelations in work among 3G, 4G, and 5G will all work together. Now, these are some of the, in the right, upper right-hand corner, you can see some of the 5G infrastructure. At one at the top, they will be sending out these radio waves in multiple directions. Sort of like, as you can see in the top left corner, how it works. So 5G doesn't penetrate buildings very well. It doesn't penetrate trees, and it will have some issues with weather. So there'll have to be a lot of them to make the system work, and they don't travel a great distance. They lose their trackings over a very short range. And you can see in the picture at the bottom, the differences you can do. One also is latency. Latency is the time it takes between you send a signal and that signal is processed. So as we get to the Internet of Things and smart cars and smart cities, it's important to have the cause and effect timed very quick as you have moving objects processing data. So a photograph below that shows a 4G antenna at the top and integrated 5Gs below. So to answer your question, we've had some interest on the horizon so far, haven't moved forward, and we'll have to deal with that when that comes to look at potential guidelines. Will these facilities be able to, the structures handle the new infrastructure at that time? Is this is more geared towards more 4G as that is still rolling out within the cities to get that capacity and coverage? Does that sort of answer your question?
It does.
I've probably answered it too much there.
No, thank you. But along those lines, then if we know it's coming, is isn't it a little late to wait till it gets here before we figure out what the guidelines would be for it?
Now, I think what we're doing is, since there is, it's taken a while to roll out the 4G, and there's still a lot more of that infrastructure to go out to come. Our next step is to start working and looking at that 5G and coming back ahead of the curve to address that.
Thank you.
Through the chair, if I may. My understanding is that a lot of the carriers are looking to deploy and get the basic infrastructure in place before accelerating 5G in Escondido. So some of the carriers are looking to deploy maybe 100 of these antenna installation units throughout the city, have the conduit in place, and then go back and retrofit those spaces. In North County, I think there hasn't been too much permitting activity for the 4G micro cell sites. San Marcos does not have any. I think Vista's just starting to see them now. Encinitas, Llanaviejito, Mar, haven't had any yet. So it's something that's starting on the front end of it. And as a city like such as Escondido, having some sort of test to see how the permitting process has come, has given us enough information to know what we need to do to strengthen our local ordinances to accommodate 4G. And we'll continuously monitor this to make sure that those are effective. And then as 5G starts getting ready to deploy, we'll then be able to, again, reassess the local code and make sure it works and makes sense.
Thank you.
Got a couple of questions. So if the FCC says, you know, that we can't put a bunch of various limitations on location and such, I guess the question I have is, within the document that was provided, was there's some prohibitions? So how do the prohibitions match up, you know, prohibiting locating these things, match up with FCC's request or requirement that we can't place limitations on it?
Sure. So they're not necessarily requirements that we can't place limitations. They're that we cannot preclude or effectively precluding their ability to provide service. So we can say, all right, you can't put it on the archway, but that light pole next to the archway, you can put it on that.
Got it. Okay. That makes sense. You know, we got a letter today, looks like it's dated December 10. There's several requests in here. I was able to read it quickly, but when we get these things to the last minute like this, it seems like staff doesn't have the time to analyze it and provide a recommendation. We're here five, 10, 15 minutes ahead of time. We certainly don't have time enough to look at this and how it applies here, and then to be able to provide a recommendation. So, you know, granted, I'm glad that somebody had taken the time and the effort to put such a letter together, because quickly looking at it, I think they bring up some valid points. We're in it. It puts us in a real tough position here to, and staff in a tough position to take all of this, think about it, and recommend to us if we, whether or not we should change what was in here, or even for us to recommend a change. So I'm having a bit of a problem with this, and I'm not disparaging anybody, I'm just stating kind of my feeling about, you know, there's some good things in here.
I would like to piggyback on what you're saying about this report. And I have to tell you, I read as far as we respectfully remind the City of Escondido, blah, blah, blah. And that lost, I resent the fact that they are telling us what we have to do. I think that this is a private company that's looking to capitalize on the whole 4, 5G movement. We're going to do what's best for the city here regardless of what they're going to remind us of. That's my feeling.
Sure. And I don't disagree at all. You know, other than there, you know, was a request here, there's a prohibition on placing these on traffic signals, you know, and, you know, it says, you know, that's, it's a good spot to put them, I guess, according to this letter, because it's in the middle of an intersection. It gives you, you know, some corridors by which, you know, the signal can go. I guess from, my concern is, city staff is recommending that we don't allow them on there, and for what reason? And because there's, certainly if there's a valid reason, you know, I want to make sure we're following what city staff is doing.
Of course. So I will start by saying that this letter was, it reiterated quite a few of the points made in previous letter. I don't think that there was anything new in there, really, that we hadn't heard from the, from this particular representative of the wireless facility, or wireless industry. So I don't know that there's anything that staff is concerned with beyond the issues that have already been analyzed. As far as placement on traffic signals, our engineering services department has indicated some concern with that for some public safety situations, for public safety reasons. Owen, I don't know if you can maybe expand on that a little bit?
Yeah, just that traffic signals are very specialized equipment designed, you know, for traffic control. And, you know, there's just that general concern of interfering or, you know, modifying, modifying that equipment. I think, you know, we are encouraging that they put them on streetlights. That's kind of our preferred location. I think our thought is, you know, one of the concerns is if, you know, if a streetlight gets knocked down, you know, it can be a few days before you coordinate and both put our streetlight back up and coordinate the replacement of their equipment. With a traffic signal, you know, we've got to be able to replace that and repair it quickly. And so that would be a concern, too. Yeah. And the traffic signals, you know, you have mast storms and wind loading, and like I said, it's very specialized equipment.
Thank you. I appreciate all of the explanation there. It's very helpful.
So are they utilizing existing light poles or are they bringing new light poles in?
In, depending on the type of deployment and type of facility, they sometimes are placing antennas and equipment on existing poles. Sometimes they have to remove and replace.
Who's developing that engineering to ensure that, as Owen had said?
Sure. So I know that our engineering services department has looked at the designs that they can provide, and they've, I believe they've also talked with our, and worked with our building division and our building official in order to analyze and make sure structural that these things are going to comply, not to comply habits.
Right. When the first, and we can go back to one of the pictures here. One of the existing, when you showed the four, four pictures of that. Okay. So the one on the left, because... So the one on the left, because of the structural equipment requirements and the internal conduit, that is a replacement city streetlight. So what they do is they don't actually replace it. They take it out and they pour a new foundation next to it. You can't use the same foundation. And they take out the old one. That is actually a steel pole clad in material to look like a concrete pole. It also has a bigger inside anode, so you can attach conduit. They'll put the mast arm back on and replace those with a new LED streetlight. The one right next to it is also a replacement city pole for that. The one, the third one, is an existing pole because of the size of the relatively smaller size of that equipment. They call that a small form factor. They were able to work with engineering and provide appropriate structural cowl so they could actually bore a hole in that and run the equipment down. The toughest one was the initial deployment of this, whether they were going to be able to core existing concrete poles because they have steel reinforcements on them. And if one of those steel reinforcements, we were concerned about the warranty and liability of that will still function structurally as a streetlight, built exactly for that purpose. So we had several of them in the city yard that were cut in half and gave those to the applicant. They were able to work with that to find a way to avoid those metal rods, core that hole, and still maintain structural integrity without avoiding the actual warranties on those poles. And they are still doing those with the small form factor. That took a lot of time to work with engineering and public research department. And also, we had some demonstration projects with, you know, city electric department to make that work. So some will be replaced and some will be existing poles.
So as they utilize the existing city hardware, will there be a fee charged to the government for placing their antennas on our poles?
There is currently a fee charged. We have an annual master license agreement. The federal government stepped in with their most recent statutory and order on actually how much you can charge now and actually how much potentially you can charge for processing these facilities. So that changed the game again and delayed some of the project moving forward. The, I believe the actual fees and some agreements will be in part of the city councils. Final ordinance and resolution.
Just a question, the suggested fees that we have to charge now, how does that compare with what we were charging? Is it less or right about the same?
So the fees that are suggested by the FCC, those are actually quite low compared to the amount of staff time that it takes to process these applications. We are allowed to collect reasonable fees so long as they can be justified. And based on staff time, that's how we're going to be looking at what it costs. So the fees that are identified by the FCC for approval of these facilities or processing of them, they are really lower than what we will wind up assessing. Fees involved for actual master licensing and placement on city facilities as well, those will be determined and provided, I believe, as part of the city council approval of any of the master license agreements. So they also relate to cost, basically cost recovery, I believe.
And then, Gordon, I know I asked this question in the form of, and I'm looking at the property, I've thought this, but in the more rural neighborhoods, for instance, via the Honda, there's not light poles, there's not clear daylight, so how are they going to address that issue? Do you know?
As they build out in 5G- Well, you're probably not going to have 5G roll out to very rural areas. 3G, 4G will cover them fine for their needs. 5G is mostly intended for more dense populations where you have a lot of congestion to provide that. So rolling out to those areas will be probably on a as-needed basis. But even via Escondido is still in a more urban area. And if there aren't streetlights, then they will probably come in with supplemental streetlights or appropriate infrastructure to address those issues.
And then with these streetlights here, whomever has their head on that pole, on that pole, and it could have raised the 5G to 4G, is that correct?
I believe, actually, we still are the, they're the owners of the infrastructure, but we're still the owner of the pole.
But they're the ones allowed to put them in the head of that pole?
It would be part of the permit for that. You can co-locate because Bioma-
Bioma right at the end, in the pole.
The example on the far left, are any of those in Escondido? I know there are a lot in San Diego.
I took that one in front of a house in Escondido. If you want to see one, probably every day you drive by, it's on North Escondido Boulevard. Just before you get to Calvary Parkway, it's in front of one of the repair shops. We have about three of those in the city.
And there's always a possibility that they'll refine the way that they look and the size?
I think some of the first ones that came in and were installed, out in 2010, there was some that stopped for a while, have changed significantly. If you drive through Carlsbad, where there's a lot of, what's that, Aqua Caliente or Metro Santa Fe Boulevard in Carlsbad, you can see the evolution of them as you go down the street from six, seven years ago to six, one-
Through the chair, I'd just like to add one thing. City staff is regularly communicating with other agencies regarding the deployment of 4G and eventually 5G, just to see the size of the antennas and the radio units, just to make sure that what Escondido is receiving in applications is of the least intrusive designs. So that's something that we'll likely monitor as part of our ongoing maintenance of our zoning code and design guidelines. But with that communication, and there are specific languages in the proposed guidelines that we actively seek out and make sure that what we're getting is the best and highest quality. Each carrier has its own design, so it's going to be carrier-specific.
Any other questions? Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing. We have two requests to speak. Michael Farrar. And if I could ask you to limit your comments to three minutes, if you would, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. First and foremost, I'd just like to recognize that we're staff. I've had the distinct pledge of report, Mr. McCollum, Mr. Paul, and Mr. Feinstein throughout the several months passing. I will limit my comments to my perspective, the network's perspective. We have submitted a letter on behalf of outside council. That was submitted on the 3rd, I believe, of December. I hope that you've had an opportunity to review that, so we can see it all. So I'm not assuming the legal challenges that our outside council has outlined, where they feel that the current draft ordinance runs afoul of the current regulatory requirements. I think our main challenges, our chief challenges are lying in the application of the design guidelines. Some of the design guidelines as currently drafted, these may be simply something that can be addressed through draftsmanship. But I believe that they are more restrictive at present. I can tell you that it is probably the more restrictive of the ordinances that I have reviewed. We have been working successfully with outside council on behalf of cities to work towards reasonable draft design guidelines so that we can reasonably deploy. And the aim here is to really avoid unintended consequences. If you'd be so kind as to talk about the last slide. That example there, the 4G, 5G, current draft guidelines would not permit that. The reason being, 5G antennas cannot be shrouded. And 4G antenna, all antennas must be contained within a single ray of shroud. So that's not, it's just not technically feasible at this point. That was saying, I think it's important to realize that there were some comments about the infrastructure and networks trying to lay around this infrastructure. 5G, if there's one takeaway that I would hope that this commission would take, is 5G is not synonymous with small cells or building. 5G is a global set of standards. There will be 5G nationwide. It may not be in the flavor of that's being deployed currently in downtown San Diego. It may not be the same flavor that's being deployed in the middle of the highway in other parks around, in LA, in Indianapolis, in Chicago. But there may be, the interdigitation of these frequencies will facilitate the greater capacity, the lower latency, the greater usability. Certainly, that need is greater where the most demand is located. So that is in urban cores, that is in major thoroughfare, and whether or not it is in residential zones. This current draft ordinance has a restriction, a prohibition, on anything within 40 feet of a residential parcel or structure. Now, that is, it's a rebuttable prohibition via minor initial use permit. But I would suggest that the challenges therein are that the 50% of homes are wireless, 80%, over 80% of phone calls to 911 are made via mobile phone at this point. And the average home is 13 mobile devices in it. So a large part of our demand is generated by residential zones. So we go where the need is. These are not, we aim to be a good partner in siting. I would suggest that at this juncture, I would request that we, that staff be directed to continue to work with the industry in order to better draft something that would avoid the proliferations with a limitation of three cubic feet per antenna, per unit. So one facility can have one antenna up to three cubic feet. Anything more than that, there is no co-location. The way it's written, co-location is a non-possibility unless you have minute structures. The antennas are not much less than three cubic feet. That's just the way they are. So I would simply ask that the staff be directed to continue to work with the industry. Our aim is to reduce the number of these needed. We can certainly look at two different frequencies. There would not be a lot of them deployed in the same pole. We would need two poles for that. Some of these restrictions are draconian. We would request that we have an opportunity to explain further that how we may be able to more reasonably deploy in consultation with staff. Thank you for your time. I appreciate the opportunity.
Adrian Salas.
Hi, good evening, commissioners. My name is Adrian Salas. I'm from Castle. I've seen my letter. Everybody got it? I too have been working with staff to really pay attention for just to be a good job of being close to the whole perspective. Actually, more so than some of the others that are brought up. So as we talked about in the end of the letter, and how Marco writes and has said, we respond to the enhanced work on what the demand is. And I have another question listed, and is data traffic has gone up over 200% in the last two years. And that's especially driving the fact that 5G is much more capable of handling large data, which the old network was probably designed for. So we're in support of the draft. We do have some edits. We did talk about them in the letter. One thing is that the draft talks about agreements that need to be in place prior to applications being submitted. And we're looking forward to seeing those drafts and the agreements. We've asked for the agreements in the past, we haven't yet received them. And we're hoping to just take a look at them and sort of iron out any issues we have with the agreements in time for when the ordinance is passed. And we can be ready for sure time. Like we said, the 50-foot step acts residential windows or doors. We're just concerned and wondering that now rather than later, that that could result in certain areas of Escondido being off limits with standard application and then all those applications being corralled through the SGP process. And that veers away from, you know, just having a very visceral process for these things. And we don't want certain areas to be cut out, resulting in effective prohibition. And the only reason I brought up the FCC in the letter was to say that wireless applications are only being allowed to be submitted at certain times, and the processes seem like there was going to be no notice of incompletion. So I put that in the letter just to show that, you know, there are certain requirements for wireless that are being held out or used for the right way. I was prepared to answer the questions you've been having about our safety, and I just-
Very good. Thank you. Okay, see nobody else in the audience, I'm going to close the public hearing. Open for discussion.
Well, I understand the need for, you know, being prepared for 5G. You know, everybody knows that we're all going wireless, and people are eliminating their landlines in their homes many times. I have a lot of confidence in staff. And I have a lot of confidence that staff has taken a look at a lot of different things. They've discussed this with leaders in the industry that are also going to be deploying these 5G antennas. And so at this time, I'm prepared to very much support staff in the recommendation that we move this forward. Now, I guess what we can do as we move into the future and we're implementing the ordinances and we're actually finding that there are problems, but we come back and we're just changing them. So at this point, I'm, I am not thinking that we should make any modifications to the recommendations from staff. It's thus a position.
I agree with, staff is very thorough. You guys do a really good job. And we see your presentations very well. Only question is, do you feel, may I, Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question, Seth? Do you feel there'd be more time to work with it?
So while we understand that there's going to be additional modifications needed to these guidelines as time goes, we need to, we feel like we're ready to get these things in, that we've really vetted this out. The guidelines and the ordinance that you have before you represents staff's best effort in order to get something that is in the best interest of the city, but also facilitates the need for deployment of our services.
Are you happy we're with the industry leaders?
Yes, we have.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Well, I, it's a highly technical subject and it takes a lot of hours to understand it. Everybody makes salient sounding points, but again, I've got to trust staff that they've worked hundreds of hours and have looked at those technical points and differences of opinion between the industry and what staff has proposed. And so I, I just can't see with my about 40 minutes exposure to this, how I can disagree with staff who spent hundreds of hours.
And I really appreciate the fact that you're following other communities because I've been paying attention to it in the paper, too. And I really am anxious to see these things refined size-wise and looks-wise because the visual pollution that we are going to face is substantial. So I do also trust what you do and the time you put into it.
I'd like to make a motion to write the recommendation to city council, RAZI 19-001, item G3.
Okay, we have six yes votes, so AC 19-001 passes. We have no current business. We have no current business, oral communication, if anybody wants to speak. Seeing none. Any comments on that, Commissioner?
You know, I really liked the speech that Commissioner Watson made. I thought that was very nice, complimented staff, and of course, the chairman and all the commissioners here. I think his insight and wisdom will be sorely missed, and I'm sad to see him go.
He didn't have to move.
He didn't have to move. I was trying to, you know, help. Look somewhere else in Escondido. Anyway.
I agree. Then we are, and also those tantrums might not have been right, but they are.